Good evening and welcome to the public session of the Halton District School Board for Wednesday, September the 20th, 2017. I'd like to welcome everyone who is in attendance and note regrets from trustee Mansour. And I believe everyone else is here. I would like to ask that if you have anything that makes noise, if you could please silence it, mute it, or turn it off, that would be greatly appreciated. And I'd like to remind everyone that we are being livestreamed out to the web so you can wave at family and friends at home and that this will be video voice recorded and posted on the web later. The land in Halton region as we know it today has a history of many First Nations as the first peoples to live here. The first peoples on this land surrounding the Great Lakes include the Atewaun Duron, the Odunawet Dunchoe, and the Anishimi. As we gather today on these treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions: land, waters, plants, animals, ancestors, and all the wonderful elements of creation that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the new credit, First Nation, for sharing their traditional territory with us. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by trustee Gray, seconded by trustee Reynolds. Is there any discussion on our agenda tonight? Seeing none. Oh, and just so trustees are aware, the order paper is going to be reviewed tonight, so I will be pulling it from the consent agendas. Okay. So... All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Is there any declarations of possible conflict of interest tonight? Seeing none. We have no presentations or delegations. Oh, we do have a presentation. We have no Inspire Awards tonight. That's the first meeting of the month, and we have no delegations. So we do have a presentation tonight, and I'd like to invite the associate director Bogue up to talk to us about the EQAO results. Welcome, associate director Bogue.
Some of my colleagues are going to join me up here as well.
Well, welcome Superintendent Salmini and Superintendent Hunt Givens. When you're ready.
Thanks, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to, first of all, introduce Superintendent Hunt Givens and Superintendent Salmini, who are both our superintendents in program services departments, school programs. And we're going to give you a brief overview of our EQAO results from last year. We shared this slide in private a couple of weeks back. This is a summary of our data. Just to highlight again for trustees, the white columns there are the provincial data and our HTSB data is the two yellow columns. So you can see, for example, if we look at grade three reading, the province went from 72% to 74% of students reaching the expectation or provincial standard, and the Halton District School Board went from 79% to 82%, which makes for a change of positive three. The blue column shows that change there, and you can see that overall, the news is pretty good. In our primary grades, we went up by plus three, plus one, and no change in mathematics. You can see in our grade six assessment, we went up by plus two, plus one, plus one. In our grade nine academic math, went up by positive two or plus two, and the applied slipped a little bit, minus three, and that's a smaller cohort. We'll talk a little bit more about that after. And then on our OSSLT, we dipped by one point, but again, significantly above the province, and we've maintained a pretty high level over a number of years for our first-time writers and our previously eligible. That's a smaller cohort as well. It tends to fluctuate, but really good news at plus seven. So we're just going to take you through, I'm going to start with a few of the highlights, and then Superintendent Salmini and Superintendent Hunt Givens are going to give you some more specific details on both secondary and elementary. So the big post-it note on the screen there is our grade three reading and grade six reading and writing, and it's bigger because these are our best results ever. They've been on a positive trajectory for the last number of years, and these results are our best ever. So that's quite an accomplishment, and we hope to continue improvement in those three. To the top right there, we can see grade three and grade six reading and writing, and we'll talk, we'll show you the graph that provides a little bit of, a little bit more detail here. Our students with special education needs in both grade three and six, reading and writing, have shown a substantial increase. And as you know, that's been an area that we really wanted to focus on in our new multi-year plan. HTSB is above the province in all assessments. That's been traditional for a number of years. Grade six math, another area of focus for us, a small increase, still low, and we'll talk about that a little bit more later, but we've turned the corner, I think, here a little bit with at least a modest increase, which is good news. And applied math continues to be a focus for us. That was one where we dropped a little bit. And the other area which was a change for us this year is we've seen an increase in the achievement gap for our English language learners, meaning we had a little drop there on the OSSLT. So we're not going to go through, as you recall, a couple of years back, we went through many, many slides. We're happy to provide those to trustees. I think we did last year, and if trustees would like a more comprehensive slide deck, we're happy to share those with you. We didn't want to go through all of that tonight with you, but we've picked a few areas to highlight. So here's primary reading, and we talked about this was one area, highest result ever. And there's the trajectory. We're the blue line, and the black line is the province. And if you recall back in 2014, 15 was the year when there is no data for us to report because of some job sanctions across the province. But that kind of trajectory there looks very much similar for both junior reading and junior writing. So these are three areas that we continue to go up and to the right, which is good news and our highest results ever. Now, this slide, just so that you can get your bearings on this one, the red line shows the, shows all students over the course of five years, from 2012, 13 to 16, 17. We break that red line down into boys and girls, so the blue line and the green line. And if you look over to the right, you see the cohort sizes there. So this is primary writing, just as an example, 4,662 students. You can see that the boys and girls numbers add up to that, and you can see that our girls in primary writing are outperforming our boys by a little bit, but we have a very high level of achievement here. And then two subgroups, and these cohort sizes, you can see, special education, students with special ed needs, 644, and our English language learners, the cohort size is 988. So those are subpopulations. And the reason we wanted to share this slide with you is just to show you that upswing in special education from 15, 16 to 16, 17. That's pretty significant. We haven't seen that in a little while, and that trend is very much the same in grade three reading and writing and in grade six reading and writing. So that's a nice improvement for our students with special education needs. Junior math, we didn't want to just highlight the big success stories. Here we are, junior math. You can see our trajectory in blue, again, over the last five years, and you can see the province there as well. You can see that there's been a general decline. This is an area that we struggle with and the province struggles with, but our data at least has sort of, if you think of that as a little bit of a, we've reached the bottom and we've actually grown by or moved up by one point. The province was steady this year, so it may be that both the province and the Halton District School Board will start to head out of that curve and start to head up and to the right. That would be our hope and our intent, and we're working very hard on that. I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Hunt Givens.
Thank you. So in grade nine, our applied math results, we look to the cohort. So here, the graph is showing you the students who were in grade six and tracking them through. And so we can see in the blue, those that maintained the standard, the 11%, the rose to standard, dropped from standard, and never met standard. And obviously, we're very, very proud of those that have rose to standard, and that's great, but we also see here that there's work to be done, and those who haven't yet met the standard. Now, that doesn't mean that there hasn't been any improvement. That's where, remember just how small this cohort is. So this means that those students may have met, and we're looking at the individual students, and that's the work of the renewed math strategy. So there can be improvement. The 45% rising to standard are showing you those who've made that jump to the successful side of that leveling, where those who aren't yet there could have moved from a level one to a level two or any sort of movement in between. And those are the kids within our efforts that we're drilling down to continue to support, and as well as that small, very small fraction, the 3%, who actually dropped from their junior mathematics. But overall, a positive statistic in that significant value-added, 43% from grade six to grade nine math, which is a great statistic. Okay. I should have brought glasses. I'm struggling to see the screen here, but they're not going to help me at all over there. Okay, so if we look at our graphs over here, and we can see the difference in the cohort size, and to give you the exact numbers so you're aware, last year, we had 619 students in our applied level mathematics course compared to 3,484 students in academic mathematics. So when we look at the group as a large cohort, like at grade nine, all grade nine students together, then we can see on the right-hand side that we remain, we're above the province in both, but we remain above the province, and we're tracking at a much less of a gap than when we were when we were just looking at those applied students, which are a much smaller group, because here in Halton, across all of our schools, we don't have as many students taking applied as they do in other boards. And so you can see little, you know, fairly consistent from 2012 over to 2016, 17 in both areas, but still a significant gap as we see in the province, and that's one that we're working hard to close.
And this here shows you some comparison data for the elementary assessment. The one column compares to the 2015, 16 data for our board, and then the other to the province. And what's noteworthy would be that in all six categories of the elementary assessment, we've seen either improvement or no change in comparison to last year's data, and we also show a significant, greater result significantly than the province again.
And then the same comparison for high school. So our grade nine applied mathematics, the 52%, which is down three from the, from before, and our provincial results were still much higher than those. And our academic math, which I previously mentioned, where we stay well, well above the province with the 92% and trending upward there. Our literacy test, that's different. The literacy test is written in grade 10, is a requirement of graduation and is written by all students, and so it is not specific to the level that your course happens to be taken in, although we do get our results and we are able to disaggregate by that. But we'll see that we've remained fairly consistent, our first-time eligible students with 87% compared to the provincial results of 81%. And so again, we're 6% above the province there.
On the next two slides, I'm just going to take you briefly through the plans that we have in elementary for both literacy and for math. It's hard for you to see that wheel right now, but that is our program implementation wheel, and the school programs department partnered with our other departments to develop that. Our system principals did a great deal of work, and we're really trying to use that framework for all of our planning in terms of learning. And it starts with really the vision for the learning and focusing direction, considering growth mindset, taking into account learner profile and individual learning needs, and then equity and inclusion and innovation. And then there's a bunch of puzzle pieces around which really take into account all kinds of things like content knowledge, planning, assessment and evaluation, parent engagement, learning outside the school day, all of those pieces, and then consideration to building collaborative cultures, and then monitoring reflection and planning forward. And I share that because you will hear more about that as we share the work that we're doing. We want to have a consistent framework. So in terms of elementary literacy, I'll share a few highlights. One is we're going to be focusing highly on emergent literacy, so that's really helping educators to focus on helping students at that very early stage of literacy. So in this work, we'll be focusing on K-1 transitions, looking at how we can focus on emergent literacy while we're also focusing on play-based kindergarten program and inquiry-based kindergarten program. And so we're excited. We're going to start with 15 schools where we'll have a team come, including an administrator, both the ECE educator and the OCT educator and CERT, and then we're going to be scaling that over the next few years to ensure that all schools have an opportunity. We focus greatly on professional learning, lots of opportunities for both administrators and staff members, board-based, school-based, and we also have some online learning resources developed. We continue to have consistent resources across our schools, and are going deeper in terms of the use of those resources. Still highly focused on monitoring student learning, so helping schools to know what to do, how they're looking at student work, so that they can make precise decisions about next steps for students. And then the supporting the English language learners in the classroom has been a huge success story. We engaged in work last year as a result of an innovation project where we were able to support our English language learners through technology and using Google Hangouts and training student ambassadors, and the success of that project has been amazing in terms of the difference that it's made for our students in terms of their feeling belonging and inclusion, and so we are going to be continuing that work as well. And then we have some learning outside of the school day opportunities. For literacy in particular, it's primary and junior, and it's closing the gap in reading and writing, and so we continue to look for opportunities to engage kids outside of the school day.
The literacy plan in secondary, we work, Tina and I work very closely as a K-12, and so the wheel directs our work in both. The focus of our literacy plan in secondary remains in our, on our LEAP students and our locally-developed English programs, on building cross-curricular writing into our applied and the applied institutes. Our applied institutes are a homegrown project and solution that we are in about our fourth or fifth year of working on. We also have a learning outside the school day remediation, so we do mock literacy tests with grade nine and 10, and then we invite students to come in who haven't fared as well on that test, and we invite them to come and to have practice and remediation sessions. Our supports for English language learners are also increased as we know that they struggle with this test, depending where they are on their educational journey, and we also provide professional learning in the form of subsidized teaching ELL learners, an additional qualification course for teachers, because of course, our English language learner population is growing in our board.
In terms of the mathematics plan in elementary, as you know, we've had a mathematics plan in place over a number of years. We've now taken the time to look at what that might look like, what we're continuing and going deeper with over the next three years for the life of the current multi-year plan and the VIPSa. And so some of the pieces are similar to the literacy plan, but I will highlight a few things. One of our big areas is supporting students with learning disabilities in their math learning, and so we started that work last year, and it was highly successful, and now we have a multi-year plan for spreading that work across all of our elementary schools, and we've added a grade seven to nine component as well. We have lots of professional learning opportunities again at all levels, including, as I said before, for literacy board, school-based, and online options. We have math lead teachers or math coaches in every school to help support that learning. We're continuing with all the current resources that we've been using in the schools, and we're gaining momentum in terms of a universal use. More and more schools are more proficient with many of the resources that were introduced early on in the math plan. We're also focusing on monitoring for individual student learning as well in math and providing both release time and strategies to schools to be able to do that and coaching around that. And we have some learning outside of the school day opportunities as well. I will highlight that we have grade three and six flexible thinkers is one of the learning outside of the school day opportunities, and then we started grade seven and eight, we called it bot math, and it really connected coding and math for our grade six, seven, and eight students. So that was successful, and we're continuing with that. And we do have something coming this summer, which would be for grade six to eight students, and it's based on Joe Bowler out of Stanford's work, a program that our staff have engaged with and have been able to bring to Halton, so we're hoping that this summer, we can also offer that as a learning outside of the school day opportunity.
In secondary, the ministry has a renewed math strategy. We're in year two. We have nine renewed math strategy schools of our 18. However, what's good for a few is good for all, and so we're able to scale that for all of our schools. It includes some principal coaching, it includes a tool called the AACT tool, Achieving Excellence in Applied Courses, and what this tool, it's an online tool, enables us to do is to track the individual students throughout their course. So instead of talking about what the pass rate is for that particular course, it's about moving each individual student from where they happen to be at the beginning through pre-assessment and throughout the course. So if you started at a level two, watching and tracking your movement throughout based on very specific strategies for teaching mathematics. And so these schools are receiving additional funding to do this work, co-plan, co-teach, collaborative inquiry, all sorts of different types of strategies, and then within our own board for everyone, the applied learning strategy, which is good pedagogy and really premised on the notion that we teach students from their toes to their ears, and we don't just teach subjects. Kids don't care what you know until they know that you care. And so these types of strategies that we're delivering in all of our school subjects, an additional qualification subsidy as well as professional learning such as co-plan and collaborative inquiry, pulling people out. We sent all sorts of teachers last year to the provincial math conference, and then the payback of that is they're running a miniature one where they can share with one another, so that teachers who weren't there will be sharing what they learned at their, from colleagues across this province in order to sort of popcorn and percolate off one another. And then we're running a couple UP math projects, which is pairing together the special education learning resources course with the applied mathematics, so that you would have one one semester and one the other. This is where families would volunteer and say, I would like my child to have both, and their learning strategies also very much focuses on a math component. And to make that more fun, there's a gamification piece that's part of it, and so we're using iPads and some very specific math strategies through iPad application through that. We're doing that in two of our schools right now, and you'll probably hear more about that throughout the year as we've gone to other boards to see how that's been working. So currently, that's at CK and Robert Bateman and soon Acton.
So we're into the end zone here, and just wanted to make a statement that, you know, we've been looking at the EQAO data since it was released to us the last couple of weeks, and what we do is we typically pour over that data, and you can see that there are purposes for it at the student, school, and system level. Student-level data is great, kids get a report home, it's a snapshot. Just want to emphasize that EQAO is only one piece of data. We have all kinds of data that we use, achievement data and other data on kids that we use to help drive instruction resources, programming, that sort of thing, but this one piece for sure is useful, so students get a snapshot of how they're doing. Schools can dig into that data and can disaggregate it by question. They can look at specific kinds of questions, particular areas of the math curriculum where their school may have excelled or may have struggled, and that helps inform next steps with respect to program. You know, for example, if the algebra questions, we, you know, weren't done well in one school, that might be a question to ask, to sit down with some teachers and look at the program and see whether we're emphasizing the kinds of things that are in the curriculum and that are therefore assessed on EQAO. And at the system level, similarly, we can disaggregate data a whole bunch of different ways. We can look at subpopulation groups, and you saw a couple of them, for example, our English language learners or students with special ed needs. We can look at school to school, and we can disaggregate again by type of question to see whether across the district, whether we maybe need to do some work in a particular area within the mathematics program or within our literacy program, that sort of thing. I just want to turn this back to student, to our superintendents to provide a little more context, specific to either the elementary or secondary panel, and also to Superintendent Zonaville, because he has some insight into how we might use that data around supporting students with special ed needs. So we will start at elementary first.
We also use the data to look at individual schools and to see schools that have gained in certain areas so that we can learn from their wisdom. So part of what we're doing in the program department is looking at all of the different schools to see where we might like to visit, to ask questions around what has happened over time, if there's been an increase over time in certain scores. So that's helpful, because that way we can create networks for sharing of best practices among our schools. We also use it for planning all of the PD opportunities, because as a system, we want to provide in the areas that our students are perhaps lacking in.
And I would just add, so EQAO provides but one piece of the puzzle and the snapshot. Our own research department does a phenomenal job as well of providing us with data that we use at student, school, and a system level as well, the Tell Them From Me data, those attitudinal pieces that are all part of it as well. EQA also provides a little bit of that. There are survey questions that kids finish when they are finished their assessment, and they'll answer things like, I like mathematics, I am good at mathematics, and that data is part of what we look at as well, because movement along those attitudinal pieces too. We don't all need to get 99% in the highest level math course that's offered, but it would be wonderful if all students felt that they enjoyed math and they felt confident within it, and that's the attitudinal piece of it.
For students with special needs, you saw early in the presentation that there's been a fairly significant increase in the performance of those students in the data that we received this year. That gap between the regular or the whole population of our students and That gap between the regular or the whole population of our students and students with special needs has been there for many years. And so we're certainly thrilled to see that gap close this year. But we want to make sure that this isn't just one year's data. We want to see that this is a longer-term trend. So we're doing some similar things to what you've heard around looking at why have the results increased in some specific programs and specific schools? So we're looking at that. And we can drill down in a fair bit of detail now and look at actual exceptionalities and see if we're closing the gap by student profile and why, and look at the efforts we've been putting forth, because this has been a real focus for us is to close that gap. We know that many of our students with special needs are capable of greater achievement than they've been having so far. So it's great to see our efforts are producing. We want to make sure that this is sustainable and that the trend will continue.
So that's really the end of our presentation. As I mentioned earlier, we will send you a slide deck with a slightly more comprehensive set of slides for you to peruse at your leisure. And we're happy to answer any questions that trustees may have. And you can direct them to any one of us if it's got a specific elementary, secondary, or special education angle to it.
Thank you very much for your report. It's great to see that we are keeping ahead of the province and that while we are, there's still all these things that are being put into place to do continuous improvement. So thank you for that, and thank you for the explanations about what we have done and what we are continuing to do, so to make things better. And you do have a list of questions coming at you. Our first speaker is Trustee Gibbons.
Thank you, Chair Amos, through you. Looking at the breakout of the students with special needs, I was just wondering, are these students that are either formally or informally identified, or are they students that have an IEP and may fall under either category?
Through the chair, so the results are for all students that have an IEP. So those are both identified and identified.
Thank you.
Sorry. Excluding gifted.
Excluding gifted, right, because that.
Thank you. And Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much, through the chair. I'd like to make a comment first, and that is that the successful results is certainly an endorsement of many successful strategies and programs and practices being used by our administrators, teachers, and supportive staff. So congratulations to all. I particularly like the analysis and use of best practices, likely transformational practices, found in our schools, which are outliers or those of the schools where the results are highly successful and where there's been marked improvements. So I really like that as a strategy. My question is for Superintendent Hank Gibbons, and that is regarding the grade 10 literacy test. I was particularly pleased to see that though we lost only 1%, I perceived that we might have lost more of a percentage, given the quite negative and disheartening experience that students had at the beginning of last year in the experiment, if you would, from EQAO to put everyone online. I wonder if you could comment what the plans may be for this year?
Through the chair to Trustee Graves. It was indeed a learning curve for all of us. However, I will say, we did learn a great deal through that experiment. It was a test of our own system to move online. It was a test of our infrastructure in terms of technology, and it was a test of our patience. But all in all, we did learn from that. There is no plan for that to occur online this year. There is, however, a plan to move forward, and understandably so. EQAO is trying to modernize and stay on top of things. And so it will be occurring. It will not be occurring this year. So we were able to have students use it as a practice last year, because it didn't count for our students. We will still be doing our own practicing and mock tests for our students to help them better understand their strengths and challenges as they prepare for the graduation requirement.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Thank you, through the chair. I have a couple of questions on the applied end of things. I know that we break down applied versus academic for the math scores for grade nine, but I don't see that same breakdown in the OSSLT. And I was wondering if we could be provided with that? I was also looking at the applied numbers and wondering if we could also be advised whether or not these, what percentage of these students have an IEP? And then I wanted also to know, what are the rates of success in the class itself versus EQAO? Because a two is still a passing grade, even though it's not considered to be at par for EQAO.
Through the chair to Trustee Collard. I will try and do them all, and I'll go in reverse order, because you made a great point there. When we're talking about the math in grade nine, the test is different if you're in applied level mathematics or academic level mathematics. And it is measuring the percentage of students who are hitting the level three. And so when we look to our own in-house data around pass rates, our pass rates are much, much higher, because pass is taking into the 50% and higher, as opposed to the level three, which is the achievement of a B or better. And so that is part of the data that we collect and we look at. Provincially, they would like to see all students performing at that level. But we do see much, much higher results for our students when we're looking at pass rates in our classes, and it is something that is tracked closely. In terms of the literacy test, it's the same test for everyone, and everyone writes, because it's a measure of literacy in the province. And many of us in education and at home get frustrated when some of our students that we know aren't going to be able to pass, have to write the test, because it is a requirement. And then when you aren't successful, you're able to take a course. And so students that are locally developed don't have high success rates in this, and it's a very frustrating experience for all of them. And the province would defend this by saying that it is a measure of literacy in Ontario, and thus we need everyone to do, recognizing we know that not everyone is going to hit that standard that has been set. But it is something, because we know our students have to do, that we work very hard to try and make the experience as positive as one for them, because it can be very frustrating to be set with such a hard task before you. So that's something we work on very hard with the locally-developed students and our LEAP students as well. We do break those results down ourselves in-house, and we look at those results, applied, academic, locally-developed. And I can certainly, when we share with the larger deck, we can include greater information on there. And there was a third question, and I'm sorry, but I've lost it. Oh, special. The answer is special education, 55%. I'm sorry, I don't know.
What percentage of the applied students are, have IEPs?
Oh, five.
55%. Thank you. Trustee Mitch Polansky.
Thank you, through the chair. I have two questions. My first, I think, is for Superintendent Hank Gibbons. So this is about the grade 10 literacy test. So I know that at my school, we have, I know of one teacher in particular who's a literacy coach, and I know that for at least part of the year, she has one fewer class that she teaches, because instead of teaching that class, she's working with students, and not all of them are English language learners. And it's her role to prepare them for the literacy test in the second part of the year. And to my knowledge, it's worked very effectively. So I was wondering if this practice of having a literacy coach designated teachers who specialize in this is commonplace in other secondary schools across the board? And my second question is, I know you mentioned that more data can be shared with the trustees, and you also talked about the data or the questions about students' perspectives, so for example, their attitudes towards math and reading. I was wondering if that could also be shared with the trustees, because there are some questions in particular that I think could be very interesting to look at. Like, I know that in the grade nine EQAO test, for example, in some schools, the grade nine math portion of the EQAO is used as a part of their marking. For my school, it's our math exam, in fact. And I know that there was one question as to whether or not the EQAO being a part of the curriculum motivated the students or made them feel like they were learning better. So that could be something interesting to look at, as to whether or not it was effective to integrate in the curriculum. So I'm just wondering if we could have that data as well?
Through the chair to our student trustee. I always smile when you ask questions, because you are such a very deep thinker. Yes, the information can be shared on some of the attitudinal measures. The coaching piece comes out of our own staffing in Halton. And there was a time when we had literacy coaches across the system, but our literacy results are so much higher than those of the province, and resources are finite. And so the coaching positions are now in the mathematics side. And in fact, your school is unique in that that is something that your principal does at that school. So the supports to the literacy pieces come in the form of human resource supports, where we have teachers who are supporting our students with special education needs and our English language learners. So we have some itinerant resource teachers who are supporting in that area, as well as literacy teams within buildings that are doing a great deal of work and this learning outside the school day remediation that you've heard about. But we no longer have the literacy coaches as part of our staffing in the various schools.
Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, I do have a question. So further on the applied math, when I saw the results, they are fairly baseline, but this year it was 15% of 699 students who passed, which is approximately, if my math's right, about 105 students. So is the cohort for those years fairly consistent number-wise? Like, I mean, is it roughly 700 students per year? Because that does make a difference in those percentages, right? And with the percentages being so low, that it's hard to capture the actual significance based on those students who do pass, because that's quite the achievement, especially at a 55% with IEPs. So the numbers play out, but they don't play out, you know what I mean? Like, because 15% doesn't look like much, but it actually is.
Yes, through the chair, to the chair. You're correct. And if you look at slide nine, you can see the last few years in terms of our enrollment in our applied level programming. The cohorts in some of those schools are remarkably small, like they're, depending on the school, they might have two applied sections, another school might have one, they may have 14 students in it. So when we're looking at 619 students compared to 30, well, almost 3,500 students in the other, the size of the cohort does have an impact. And when you're looking at it from an individual school point of view, sometimes you can see huge swings in a school's results in their applied mathematics within Halton for that reason. And if you were in a school where you had a much more balanced number of students in applied versus academic, you wouldn't see that, because of the impact of the math on the math results.
And for those schools who have higher success rates, are their practices shared throughout the system?
Yes, very much so. So as Trustee Gray mentioned, those transformational practices. We have great conversation in all of our subject areas through our subject councils in our secondary system. And in mathematics in particular, part of the renewed math strategy is the province supporting just that, ensuring that math teachers are talking to other math teachers. And so our schools have to declare the strategies that they're going deeper with, and then we bring them together to share part of that as well. So that has also been a great part of our applied strategy work, taking what has worked and where we have seen positive changes in certain places, and then trying to upscale that, such that if it's what's good for some is good for all. And if it's working for some, then there's a very good chance it'll work for all. And so we're trying to get that out there. And a lot of that is the conversational time for teachers and the opportunity for them to share best practices and for us to make sure they're aware of exactly what those best practices are.
Thank you for the information. I don't want to take away from our significant achievement with the 92% in academic, because that in itself is huge. And the fact, it's just that those applied students are sometimes most, some of our most vulnerable students, and the fact that we are helping them achieve better is very significant. So thank you. Trustee Collard.
Thank you. I just wanted a clarification piece. I believe the chair referred to 15% pass rate. I thought the pass rate was 57 or 58%. So it was over 300 students who achieved. I just, I just thought it was important to make sure that the public knows that it wasn't 15%.
I'm not sure about the chair's math, but there's, the cohort is about 15%. So around 600 students, and then they, their data is correct as displayed on the screen. So yeah, you're correct.
Thank you for the clarification. I was watching the slides and trying to commute, so thank you. Seeing no further speakers, I'd like to thank you very much for your presentation. And as I said, the fact that we as a board are doing so well to help all of our learners and the, in the review of what strategies that we are using and the things that we are looking forward towards to help all of our learners do better and to help staff learn more to support those students, we're doing a great job. So thank you very much for all that information. Director Miller.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. I would like to thank Superintendents Salmini and Hank Gibbons and Associate Director Pope for their leadership in helping us identify and support, and also Superintendent Zonoffeld, and identify and support those students who have, shall we say, the greatest challenges, both in maths, there was the British coming out, math, and literacy. And I look forward to the results of the project that we're doing this year. So thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation. So we are currently up to the consent agenda items, and we will be pulling out the order paper. Is there any other items that would like to be pulled before we have approval of our consent items? Trustee Harvey Hope. Yes, I have a request to pull the capital update, please. Okay, and just so you're aware, the capital update should read for 2018, not 2017 on the title. Up to, oh, the Boeing boundary, sorry. Okay, never mind. I apologize. The wrong one. Forget what I said. Thank you. It's for the Boeing boundary, which is further down, and we'll talk to that when we get there. Okay, so with pulling out the order paper and the capital update, can I have approval of the, to receive the rest of the consent agenda items? Approval? Which include the, oh, approval of the minutes and receipt of the other items. Moved by Trustee Al Harrison, seconded by Trustee Gibbons. Any other discussion? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So the first item that we'll be looking at under the, the items that have been pulled is the order paper. Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos. I thought the way we would go through the order papers, just go by the motion, and I will look through the superintendents around the table. And some of these are Board of Trustees motions as well, so they can, you can speak to that. And in fact, the very first one, M120204, I think that would be Trustee Collard.
Thank you. This is in subcommittee. It's been reworked a couple of times, because the, the actual work being done changed. And I would like to hear from that subcommittee, actually, as to the progress being made.
That subcommittee's been on hiatus for a year, actually, because of the PAR process. That subcommittee's been on hiatus for a year, actually, because of the PAR process. And it was just a big draw on our time. So we are about to reembark on that subcommittee to start finishing it up. We are, we have a good portion of the work done, though.
Thank you. Could we possibly have a notation in the far right column that it's in subcommittee? Thank you.
Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you. Just as a reminder for trustees, that there were two, that motion is now broken into two parts. There are two policies that resulted from that. One is complete. It's just the second one that is now in progress.
Thank you. So we could half-shade it. All right, director.
Thank you, Chair Amos. M130073, regarding, I don't think I have to read these out, but it's regarding Ciyak and the motions, and Superintendent Zonoffeld will speak to it.
Thank you. Through the chair, if you recall, we had several motions around our gifted review. All of those were addressed except for this one remaining motion. And this, we've been waiting because we wanted to see this addressed through the special education review. So that review is continuing this year. If you recall that from the screen, we talked about that. And so that's why this is still in the order paper, and we hope to see this addressed and brought forward through the review this year.
Thank you. Director Miller.
M130171, that's the second part of that one, I believe, correct? Of the bylaws?
No.
No?
Structure.
Okay, so I will pass it over to trustee Collard.
I actually don't think this ever came to policy by law and governance. This was the work that we had done with the previous board, and we didn't ever approve a structure for board policy. Not one that includes governance policies and framework policies.
I trust you.
I don't think this is complete.
Hi. I believe this started while I was also perhaps PBG, PBNG chair. We did approve the structure to have the two sets of policies. We just haven't moved the old policies into that structure. So the problem is, the work is still ongoing. And I believe when we had a update in the spring, the director and manager Gortmaker undertook to work on that, but also the policy bylaw committee and possibly and/or finance accountability, et cetera, whatever, needs to follow up on this, because we do have policies and governance policies in place, specifically the executive limitations policy that is still in place, but not. So it ties into a further motion further down on another page. But it still needs to stay there because we're not quite got it so that anybody would know where to find things.
Thank you. So yes, we are almost there, we're just not quite there. Director Miller.
And I would add that those are, M130172 is also linked to, two on the next page, which is M170021 and M170059. And those are both in progress, those are all in progress at the moment. It's all part of the structure, and we are seeking legal on that.
Correct.
M140158, I will turn it over to Associate Director Boe.
This, this motion pertains to an assessment of whether there are second French immersion entry point would be an option, and it was to be deferred until after primary core French was implemented. We're in our last, this is our, remember, we had a staggered entry, and this is our last grouping of schools. So we've now got a good cohort size to assess primary core French. So I, that's why nothing has come forward up until now.
Trustee Harvey Hope first. No? Trustee Collard.
Thank you. I was just wondering if you expected to be completing that work this school year prior to the end of term for trustees, because this is now overlapping terms if we don't. It actually already does overlap terms. So we don't want it to overlap three.
We can, I think our original intent was to sort of have all schools in, but I think we've got a reasonable sample size that we could, we could get into this work this year.
I would concur. We can do that this year, because we're going to bring a report in February around the French, the French immersion entry point. Probably, it could coincide with that. Yeah, in fact, we've got it in there, February 21st.
Thank you.
M150071, there's a few of us that can speak to this, but I'll turn it over to Superintendent Veerman.
Through the chair, there has been considerable discussion at the consortium with respect to review of school bell times. There still is more discussion to take place, but certainly at our last operations meeting, there was, you know, some discussion as to whether or not this should be done, completed in the current year, or based on the, the work that is required to be completed in the year, whether that is best deferred to next year. That's something that the consortium, the board of directors, need to bring back to the respective boards to determine how to proceed.
And I believe that it's tied up right now because it's waiting for parameters from the both boards of trustees. And I have reached out to the Catholic board to try and set a date in October.
Thank you, Chair. M150139, I'll turn it to Superintendent Etoff.
Through the chair, with respect to, with respect to that motion, that's, we've brought two reports thus far, annual reports reporting on our, on our progress towards each of those calls to action. And, and again, we have a report listed for this June of 2018 to continue to update the board with respect to, with respect to the progress with the work in these areas. Yeah, sorry.
There's some questions.
Yeah.
Sure. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I can just, I can just add that, I mean, there's multiple areas that are being addressed across the board as per our, our board action plan, which is developed annually. And we know that part of that is, is through ensuring that our school environments and our board environments are reflective of, of our work in these areas and our, and our commitment to these calls to action. And as such, each of our schools has been, been provided with a canvas, with a outline of the acknowledgement of the, of the lands and territories, as well as treaty maps. And we are in, in process of getting one of those to be displayed as part of our, our facilities here at JWS, and particularly outside the boardroom.
Go ahead.
There's also our intention, the two parts of that, commit that all students graduate with knowledge, et cetera. Or we would like to acknowledge putting out a plaque by the treaty map as well, acknowledging.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you. This motion is one of the examples of ones that, there's no, there's nothing definitive that would take this off our order paper. But I would suggest two things. One, if, if the reporting comes to us annually, say, in the, in the list of annual reports that we perhaps would, would qualify that, that first part as having, having been done. And then, secondly, if in our bylaws, we updated it to include the acknowledgement, that the acknowledgement will happen at the board table, that that would meet the part two. And, and then we could be satisfied that this is in place indefinitely, and we could take it off the order paper. Okay. So it's on our agenda, but I think it just.
But that's in the bylaws.
Is it in the bylaws? It is?
Yeah, because our agenda's in the bylaws.
Okay, so that second part is taken care of already. It's just the first.
Let me make sure I understand, Vice Chair Graves. I just want to make sure I understand. No problem, but just, if we're bringing a report annually, which we would do, we will be doing, you're suggesting that we then covered off both parts of it?
The one part.
No, but with that and the fact that it's in the bylaws, then the whole thing would be covered off.
I think so, but others might think differently.
Okay, that's fine.
Trustee Collard.
Thank you. Part one is a commitment that all students graduate with knowledge of residential schools. It's got nothing to do with what we have in our agendas. Part two is the agenda and the annual reporting. I would say that we probably need to embed this in our equity and inclusive education policy so that it can come off the order paper, because part one cannot come off the order paper until it is embedded in policy.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Similar to what trustee Collard just said, my, I do agree with trustee Graves that one would never know when it would happen, because it says, commit that all students graduate. And that's one of those, how do you measure it? Are you talking about the ones that graduated last year, who may have not caught up or passed the grade 10 history? Are we saying as of a certain date? We never said when we were going to make sure that they could check the box and say that they graduated with. Because of the fact that grade 12 English is the only course that's required in grade 12, I'm not too sure when we think we're going to catch everybody unless we've embedded it through all the courses. And I'll let Superintendent Gibbons in a minute. But I just, I also agree it should be embedded in policy. I think we should actually have a separate policy on the, I don't know, board's response to the national truth and reconciliation or something, so that one could actually hook all those other pieces onto it, including the annual report that comes in June, how we deal with National Indigenous Day, you know, the fact that we support this, we do this, we do this, and then the, all the different pieces we could actually hook on, the admin procedures onto that policy, not just being in, in even bigger one. Again, I also agree it should come off the order paper, but not until we have some other pieces in place.
Superintendent Etoff?
Yeah. One of our, one of our requirements in order to receive the funding from the ministry around indigenous education is to develop a very comprehensive annual board action plan. Part of that board action plan is certainly the learning that will be taking place through certain courses, certain, certain curriculum opportunities for students over the course of, of their time through K through 12. However, there are many other opportunities for, for learning across the school, activities take a part, that they may be taking part in. An example, last year would have been the work that we did with the blanket exercise, where we had whole school populations that took place in that particular learning opportunity that wasn't necessarily connected to each and every student's curriculum in that given year. So it's, it's a very broad, very broad approach in terms of the learning pieces that are connect with this, with this particular item, and not one that's targeted to a student having to take a particular course or curriculum area prior to graduation.
Thank you. Director Miller.
Through Chair Amos, M160045, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Cullen.
We did, in fact, have a couple of meetings with both the city and the Nelson Group on this, early in the process. Several different discussions and plans were put into place. However, we actually had plans of our own on the board's behalf to do some work at that site along with the city, and some of the user group members weren't aware of that. I think that has caused them to reconsider their participation. We've proceeded with many of the updates on the site as part of our plan with the city. So we haven't had any activity since that point.
So does that mean that it's not going to happen as a joint project? So therefore, does it need to be here?
We're not clear at this point as to whether or not they'll pursue some other part of it. There's, there was a long shopping list initially, and I think we've addressed some of the items that were on there. And I think the group will probably pursue other elements of the site. So I, I would be uncomfortable saying it's complete. The initial intent, I think, is complete in that we've met, reviewed, and discussed, and the outcome of it is yet to be determined by the user group to some degree.
Okay. Trustee Collard.
Thank you. These, these are the types of motions that give me pause, because I worry that that will never come off the order paper. And so I would suggest that we put a notation that this needs to be monitored, and if it's, if it's still on the order paper after a certain period of time, we should look at rescinding. Because if the intent has been carried out, but the actual results may not match what was in the motion, and may never, then this will be on the order paper in perpetuity.
Through Chair Amos, through trustee Collard, I agree. We need to put some kind of timeline to this. We can't do it right now, but Superintendent Cullen, myself, and, and manager Gortmaker will get together and then come back to the board. Is that all right, Superintendent Cullen? Yeah?
Thank you. I just believe that we need to revisit it with the, the actual group to see if this, the actual original intent needs to go forward, or if the original intent is completed. Not a further, that would be something else. Thank you. Director Miller.
M160097, I believe this is the chair of the board.
So yes, the fix, the finances has been much more difficult to actually get our heads around, and it is still in play and will, and we're sending out a meeting request shortly to revisit and see if we can try and formulate some type of a explanation first, and then where we want to go from there.
Director Miller.
M160099, I refer, I defer to trustee Collard on this.
That's something that has not been a high priority for the last year, but we should get to that this year. Quite right.
Can I also make a suggestion that perhaps we need to attach a timeline to that as well? Given that this is 2017 and October 2018, things to change?
Trustee Collard.
I'm actually wondering if this is a policy that shouldn't be prepared by staff and then reviewed by trustees. This, I believe, would be better served in that route.
Through Chair Amos, to trustee Collard, we have no issue with that.
Thank you. And that's what the vice chair was going to say as well, it should be staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
M160111, Associate Director Boe.
This is around.
This is around our new French model implementation. It's got three parts to it. We have implemented, this is our, we're in our first year. This particular cohort is 100% English, and we have started the grandfathering as well, because we have our grade two kids from the previous system are at our, in their program at 50%. So I, I think we, I think we're there on this one. If, if we're waiting until the grandfathering is complete, it would be 2024.
No, I believe it's until the beginning of the grade two cohort, which is next year.
I think it's for September 20.
Next year. Right. Trustee Harvey Hope.
You took the words out of my mouth. I actually have people who live in my neighborhood who do not under, don't know what's happening, because they were living in non-Halton territory, or they did not go to, they were in preschool, you know, kindergarten, and so I haven't had as bad a start to September as I thought I was going to have, with people showing up and finding out, but that just may be because the principals are taking the brunt of it, so. I would prefer this to stay on here until we at least get grade two French version started, until September 2018.
That was the intention.
That it be there until we actually start. M160132 and 0133 are both referred to Superintendent Cullen.
Thank you, Director Miller. The, both of those projects, as you know, have been underway. The designs have been proceeding to the extent that we can, given the other issues that are needed, so ministry approval and acquisition of a site, in the one case, are both impacting these, but these have taken place and are underway. Again, constantly raises the question, is this motion complete once we've appointed the architect, or once they've completed the tendering, or once we've built the school, or once we've closed the school? So it's, it can have a life that goes on for quite some time. The architects have been appointed for both projects.
I believe it's when it's built. Trustee Harvey Hope.
The purpose of these two motions isn't just to appoint, but it is also to ensure where the money comes from. So until the money comes from somewhere else, then close the gap. I would say that we need to have it there, because once we have the motion to, to actually have a big budget, then we will be able to take these off, as Kelly says, when we build it, but that's not exactly, I'm being more specific. I'm saying that when we actually have money from the ministry to do the whole project, then this motion that says we can use some of our own comes off.
When the students are in school?
Build it, name will count.
Director Miller.
M170021 and M170059, we've already spoken about their related to M14, no, M13072, 0172. Next one, M170081 is grade and is coming off, as is M170082, the elevator at Frontneak. And if I may? I did? Five nine is related, five nine is related to 172, 13172, because that's the legal opinion we're receiving around the governance and policy and all that stuff. Okay, yeah. M170088, 0091, 0092, 0094, 0097, and 0103 are all related to the recently Burlington Park process, and will remain on. They're all works in progress, and they'll be at various states, stages of where they are. We can answer questions, and Superintendent Blackwell can perhaps answer some of yours specific about what stage they are at, but.
Cullard.
My question is actually about M170082. I wanted to hear from the superintendent of facilities regarding the addition at Frontneak.
Through the chair, both of the projects that are highlighted here are underway. Neither are complete as far as a construction project goes, but they are as far as the planning and execution will be taking place.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so this is the last one?
The last one is M170126. It's being graded because we submitted those last week, or no, two weeks ago, the capital priorities. Okay, thank you. Chair Amos, that's the mall.
Thank you. And the other item that was pulled out was the capital update, report 17097, Superintendents Cullen and Veerman on page 11 of your board package. Would you, do you require them to speak to it first, or would you just like to share what your concern is? Thank you.
Thank you. One, the print is getting a little small. We've got more and more projects gone going, and the print's getting a little bit small. But anyway, my question was to deal with Frank Hayden, Dr. Frank J. Hayden Secondary School, and I know things take a long time, and secondary schools take even longer, but it's been four years, and I wondered when we thought maybe we would actually be able to get to the 100% mark, because until it is at 100%, other things don't happen in those other charts.
The issues that are still outstanding at Hayden relate to deficiencies or errors in the construction work that we are working with both the original architect and contractor on. They have been coming in to do remedial work related to bits and pieces of that, but there are still pieces related to a flood that actually occurred in the building that are yet to be resolved from a legal perspective. So they're in a combination of the contractor's hands, subtrades' hands, and everybody's insurance companies. So, and they are progressing.
So, related to the capital build piece that is appendix C, and/or, yeah, C, I think it is. It, we won't know if there is an over/under of the capital build capacity for Hayden until it hits 100%, until everybody signs off on it, et cetera. So, again, it's getting to the point where it's just going to have to stay on, I guess that, all that information will just stay on the report until we actually are final, final. In the meantime, I presume that the, it's not considered construction in progress, because it's, it's done. So in the financial statements, it is in the buildings, right? It's just, it's just this other piece that's floating around? Yes, okay, they're nodding yes. And then my other question was on appendix D, the summary of the closing the gap. Again, print is even smaller than the other ones. I think maybe chart one and chart two need to start getting onto a second page. But I wondered whether or not we had any update on the note number two of chart one. It talks about using for pending projects, except if we do things that we don't need their approval for, and I wondered where we're at with all of that. It may tie into later in the agenda, in the close the gap report, and if that's the case, then.
Superintendent Veerman?
Through the chair, this portion that's noted in note two will be revised when the capital project list is submitted to the board. So the proceeds disposition, the changes the ministry has put into place have specific requirements in terms of them being renewal projects. So again, when the information is presented, that will allow us to access some of this money. And with the changes, some of the requirements to get approval from the ministry have been lifted, as long as the projects mean, meet the criteria listed by the ministry.
Okay, so are renewal projects, close the gap projects, or not all close the gaps are renewals, or which?
Through the chair, there are certain projects based on the criteria that the ministry has set that can meet the proceeds of disposition definition. So this is something that is relatively new. Prior to this proceeds disposition, we're mainly for like major rebuilds or reconstruction renovations, but over the last few years, the ministry has allowed boards to use proceeds for some type of renewal projects.
I had two follow-ups, and, thank you. You're right, I was, and I could have got a time to. All right. So that was the end of the questions regarding the capital update. Thank you very much for your report. We are now up to approval of business transacted in private session. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you. There is one item. Be resolved that the Halton District School Board appoint the firm of Snyder Architects, Inc., as the architect for the transition of educational programs, a project into Nelson High School and MM Robinson High School, as per their response to RFP 17-258, and I so move.
Thank you. Is there a seconder? I will second it. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? And that passes, thank you. The next item is the resolution for corporate credit card services, report 17092, Superintendent Veerman on page 36 of your board package. And this is for action September, oh, tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair, we presented the information, the report of the last meeting. There was also requests at that time to receive a copy of the actual documentation. I did provide that to the trustees, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to put the motion on the table first. Be resolved, the Halton District School Board, the board, enter into an agreement with the Bank of Montreal to provide the board with credit by way of a corporate MasterCard account, under which arrangements employees of the board may be issued with corporate cards on the MasterCard corporate account of the board with the bank, and the board shall be responsible for the payment of all amounts, including fees and interest charged to such corporate account, the whole substantially on the terms and conditions set forth in the draft corporate MasterCard account agreement submitted to and hereby approved by the board. Be resolved, the chair of the Halton District School Board and the superintendent of business services and treasurer are hereby authorized to sign for, and on behalf of the board, a corporate MasterCard account agreement with the Bank of Montreal substantially on the terms and conditions of the draft thereof approved by the board, with such changes or modifications as the person so signing may be in their sole discretion deem appropriate, and to sign such documents and do such other things they in their sole discretion claim, deem appropriate or advisable in connection with or to give effect to such corporate MasterCard account agreement and the program contemplated thereunder. Moved by, Trustee Grabent, seconded by, Trustee Reynolds. Is there any discussion? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Through you, men and chair, to Superintendent Veerman. Thank you for setting around the draft. I just have a quick question. I presume it says, it says proceed with the pilot for the expansion, and then it says our current purchasing card provider, the agreement has expired, and then it says the program will be piloted beginning in the fall of 2017. So what I'm trying to figure out is what happened to the existing purchasing cards in the original pilot before this expands it? Are they all moving to the BMO?
Through the chair, as was noted, our current agreement with US Bank has expired as part of the planning for this pilot rolling out to, beginning with elementary schools. We went through the OECM, which is the Ontario Education Collaborative Marketplace, and based on the terms and agreements that were approved as part of that, the, the benefits to the board of moving to the BMO card are quite substantial, and the cardholders, the current cardholders will still have the US Bank until we finalize the pilot or finish with the pilot and move on with implementation, at which point those cards will be canceled.
Go ahead.
So you're going to expand the pilot to other people and put them on the new BMO, but you're going to keep the old, the ones that were in place on the US Bank? Why wouldn't we move them into the BMO pilot?
Through the chair, there's some procedural issues we want to ensure sorted out before we move all of the other cardholders to BMO, and as soon as we're able to do that administratively, we will continue expanding the BMO card. So it's more a timing issue and not wanting to disrupt the present cardholders until, until we have all of the points ironed out.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, through your chair. So I understand that it is the Ontario Education Collaborative Marketplace that has secured this arrangement for HDSB, but this was done in June 2013, the Bank of Montreal was selected, so it's now four years. I'm not sure if you can answer this question, but I'm curious whether OECM does kind of an annual review of whether, in fact, the Bank of Montreal does provide and meet the criteria of providing, you know, the highest competitive rebates, et cetera.
Through the chair, as part of the OECM, the work that they do, and to ensure that all organizations or public organizations can benefit from the bulk buying, if that's the right terminology, there is quite a process that they go through. Most of the contracts are between three, four, or five years in length to ensure that, again, boards have the opportunity to benefit from, from the contract. So certainly, as the, as the term expires, there's an opportunity to renew, and the more organizations that can get on board or take benefit of the contract to the OECM, it just continues to provide additional benefits based, again, on, on volume. So at this point, because all of the, all of the work has already been done by OECM, we felt it was best to proceed and to take advantage of what has been secured through them.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Superintendent Veerman. So our next item is always a highlight, our student trustee reports. Trustee Metropolansky.
Thank you. First of all, trustee Mansour sends his regrets. He's at a leadership trip with his, with his school at Wanakita. The major announcement that we have to make for this report is that our first student senate meeting will be next Tuesday, September the 26th. Today was the deadline for schools, both elementary and secondary, to send in the names of their senator representatives. We would really like to have representatives from all schools this year, or as many schools as possible, so we don't have 100% attendance rate so far, but we understand that schools are busy with the start, with school just starting up. So we're going to be working with our staff advisors to follow up with the schools that haven't yet sent in names, to ensure that they do have a representative in for the first meeting. And then the second thing is, we've been in touch with staff in charge of some board committees. We mentioned this in our first report, the last board meeting, so committees like the Eco Learning Partnership, the Equity and Inclusive Education Steering Committee, the French Advisor Committee, and there are a few others, to get student representatives onto those committees, and we pull those student representatives from student senate, and that. And that selection would take place in between the first and the second meeting so that we could already have the representatives selected and chosen by the second senate meeting. We would just introduce those positions that are available to the student senators at the very first meeting. So we're really looking forward to having more of the student voice at the board level at these decision-making bodies that exist as committees on the board. Thank you.
That's great. Now, do you have a schedule for your student senate meetings that you could share with all trustees? So if they would like to drop in, they could?
Perfect, yeah, I'll send that out.
That'd be great, thank you. Trustee Collard has a question for you.
Yes, through you to the student trustee. I was wondering what time the student senate meeting starts?
So they usually start, the elementary portion is from six to eight, and then the secondary is from seven to nine, with that seven to eight overlap where the two groups are together and kind of interacting with each other. We've told the elementary students that they should come a bit earlier, around five-thirty to start trickling in, just so we can do registration and get them signed in. But yeah, those are the times.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions for our student trustee tonight? Trustee L Harrison.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Last night, the offer or ask to have student representatives on the Halton Eco Learning Partnership help, it's now renamed Environmental Management Team, was very well received. So I look forward to having or seeing somebody there. And the other thing that we talked about at that meeting was seeking student senate assistance in terms of some of the environmental challenges that we're having at some of the schools. So really asking for and hearing your advice, how we might tackle some kind of legacy issues that we just can't seem to make progress on.
Yeah, we would, that's the whole purpose of having the representatives there, so they can be the liaison between the student senate and the student body in general and those committees. But if there are any specific issues that you want us to raise within the student senate as a whole and to have discussion there to get back to you in the committee about, we would be happy to do that.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, thank you very much for your report and it sounds like things are well underway. Thank you. Okay, so our next item is the action items for October the first, fourth, sorry. The first item is the student trustee policy, report one seven one zero zero, trustee Metropolansky and Mansour, and trustees Danielli and Papin, and trustee Metropolansky.
Thank you, so I guess I'll just speak to this first. This policy has been discussed for about three years now, I would say, perhaps even longer. The main issue at stake was the ability to vote and to select your student trustee was not accessible to all students. Because in order to vote for the student trustee, you would have to be physically present at the board office, which is very difficult particularly for students coming in from the northern parts of the board. So we wanted to modernize the system and make it more equitable and accessible for all students. If I had to summarize what the main changes are, there are really three of them. The first is that there's going to be an election process within each school to select one candidate, instead of just saying that any candidate or any student can just automatically apply or submit their application to the board to give a speech and to run for candidacy. We, we put in a part to the policy that we would like for there to be one candidate maximum from each school, and there would have to be an election within each school for that candidate to be chosen. The second change is that we would still have the candidates, the final candidates, the one that's chosen from each school, give a speech in person at the board office, but those speeches would be streamed on the board website and we would give an opportunity to students to vote electronically. The technological aspect of that is still being figured out. Our ideal system is that students would log in through their HDSB emails and we would identify their school, but not their name or their grade, so none of that. Identifying very personal information, just their school for the voting aspect and track votes accordingly. And the third thing we did is we left in the equal elementary to secondary waiting, which we passed as a temporary measure last year because we felt that both groups of students have an equally important and valuable right to vote for their student trustee. So we would really appreciate your comments and feedback on the report and we're happy to speak to any of the changes.
Thank you, trustee Danielli.
Thank you, first of all, I think this represents a very exciting forward-thinking approach and I'm really curious to see how it's going to work. And it's funny, you can read things time and time and time again and still miss something. So I do apologize because I read this and a few things that I didn't catch. Three point nine, you have incorporated that through another piece in the report, but three point eight, the responsibilities, I don't believe have been addressed to the report, so I would request that you look at those again. Under three point one one, mentor and advisor, it says a trustee and an alternate, and we've actually moved towards or co-mentors this year, so we might want language reflecting that. And then my final question is, I know that your first meeting is on September twenty-sixth and you want this voted on October fourth, but I also believe that you're not going to take this to the student senators at that point because it's their first meeting. So given that your second meeting is October seventeenth, would you be amenable to this coming for action on October eighteenth that we know would have gone through student senate before we voted on it?
Yeah, so I would, I think that's a really great point. I think I would prefer that because we don't want to present this student trustee election policy to the student senators on their very first senate meeting where they're probably still confused about what exactly it means to be a student senator. Nonetheless, what is this policy document that we've presented them with that is a bit complex, has a lot of sub-points and sub-sub-points. So we'd probably introduce that at the second senate meeting. So I'm okay with having it come back to the board for the October eighteenth meeting, I believe.
Yes, but so basically we're requesting the action for this item to be changed to October the eighteenth, is that right?
Thank, thank you very much for that because I did have concerns about this table voting on it without hearing the student voice on it first, so thank you for that.
Thank you, trustee Danielli, trustee Collard.
Thank you, through you to the student trustee. I note under three point one A, the board shall provide for the appointment of a minimum of one and a maximum of two student trustees to the board. In my living memory, I can't ever remember us having fewer than two, but I know that our co-terminist Catholic board has three. And I'm wondering why have a minimum of one and a maximum of two?
I think that's an interesting point. I think it was made to just be consistent with the Education Act, I guess, which just says that every board can have a range from either one to three. I don't think this board would likely pursue one, I don't think it's sufficient for the size of the board, so I agree, I think it's extraneous and redundant.
Could I follow up, please?
Go ahead.
Might I suggest then that you actually annotate that this is the Ministry of Education guideline so that people don't wonder why that's there, the way I did?
Perfect, yeah.
Thank you, trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair to the student trustee. I actually had a different take on it, I would say change that to maximum of three so that one doesn't have to undo this again if we decide that the fastest-growing part of the universe needs its own or we decide to split by geographic Milton. If we, because certain other boards do it by geographic location, Peel divides on the four oh one, the Halton Catholic Board divides by geographic. So right now we don't. At times that's been problematic, we've sort of figured out a way not to get two from one school based on this, but the other point I had was three point three A, how do we ensure the schools share the information with students? Some of the ones coming up now probably may not need to be in this policy, but it's, it's like we're throwing stuff to the principal and making sure that they do it. So I don't know how we make sure that it sort of becomes part of the principal's job, I guess. The same one with each school will facilitate an election process, number D. Who's running it? Is it the principal? And then E is the school-selected candidate has to obtain signatures from the school and the principal before they get a formal nomination. I would suggest that they probably should have their principal's and parents' approval before they get voted on by their students in the school, so it's a timing issue.
They did request feedback to them, do you want it all here or would you prefer them to send it to you in writing?
I'm taking notes of them now and I'm sure manager Gorbik.
Director Miller.
Through you, Chair, aim as to trustee Harvey Hope's points. Schools already do all those things, they have all sorts of elections and so on, and it's generally not the principal that does it. It's a staff advisor that does it, so that, that this will not be a big cultural leap for schools to implement at all. But then I don't know what your point is.
The point isn't that the principal is or doesn't do it, this is a policy that says the school will and people then will then say who's doing it, right? So, so I, I mean, I guess if in doubt, not knowing what happens in your school, you'll assume the principal will tell you how to do it.
What I'm saying is it, it's, this will not be a cultural shift for a school to do it. Once they say we're gonna, you need this election, schools will adopt this, it's like that, this is what they do.
I have one other one. Three point six J seems to be a double negative because it's the student trustee can, can attend closed-in-camera meetings except those that, or when accepted by the director of the chair. So does that opt them back in or does that opt them out on top of?
I believe it's saying we're allowed to attend in-camera meetings except for these cases unless the director were to say that we can attend those specific cases.
That's a little confusing and I'm pretty, usually pretty good at the double negatives, so I
Thank you, trustee, your vice chair Graves.
Thank you, through you, Chair, to trustee Metropolansky. I'm a little concerned about something that I see redacted, but I don't see put back in elsewhere in a different format because I know you're, you're going to an online system and things are a little bit different. So my, my question is on three point three, as regarding the election, the parts that are being taken out include the student trustee candidates meeting to gain further information and the part where it says the candidates shall be provided with an instructional package outlining the regulations of the campaign. I was just wondering, I guess my concern is just the information that student trustee candidates might get.
In terms of the package, the instructional package that never existed, so we took it out because it just doesn't exist. So we can't provide them with it, we were like, can't really create that, we don't know what those, those, those policies would be. In terms of the information meeting, I'm trying to remember, do you remember, manager Gorbik, why we took that out? I think there was a reason for it. We actually, we, we have. We, we had one this year, I know we did, before one of the senate meetings. We said, we told the candidates that they can come to the, to the, before a senate meeting and we would provide them with information. So I'm just wondering about that. Yeah. Yeah.
Go ahead.
As a follow-up, I completely understand matching the policy with the, with the practice and perhaps it doesn't even need to be here, but perhaps that's something that the, the student trustee mentors might help with or maybe there's a spot on the website where students who might not know very much about it can get more information about what the actual job is. Because I think it's different seeing what you do and knowing what, what you do as student trustees might be, might be a little bit different, so it could be helpful.
Thank you, trustee L Harrison.
Thank you very much, through you, Madam Chair, I believe I have three points. Point number one is with respect to the E-voting, and I'm just really excited about that. I, I, you know, at TA Blake Lock, a couple of years ago, there was a big concern raised because students just weren't able to get here, so I'm glad that and the interest was certainly there, so I'm glad that there is this workaround now. That'll be really exciting to see how many students then do participate. Question or point number two is just around equity in this whole, the new election process. And I wonder whether, you know, we get, I don't know how to say this, but a certain type of students putting their names forward for an election scenario, whereas other means of getting here like, you know, a tap on the shoulder by a principal who may see a leadership quality in somebody who may not otherwise put their name forward. I just wouldn't like to lose those types of students in this scenario as well. And on that note, trustee Grevance was raising, she said to me that Thames Valley, I think it is, just created a student, an indigenous student position that they fill within their three. So I wonder about that. And then thirdly, with respect to the role under three point five, there there's nothing in here that speaks to the student senator then communicating back with their school community. That is, I think it would help to kind of grow awareness of student senate as well as the value of that position and bring more of that student voice to the table if something could be included in that regard, thanks.
Yeah, I can just respond to those points quickly. In terms of the point about potentially losing out on some students, I think part of that is a communications tool to schools and to making students more aware that this position exists. If there were to be an election within schools to select that candidate, there, that is still a form of selection process versus if that election process didn't exist, students would still have to self-select to apply as they do right now currently in the status quo to fill out the application to become a candidate. So regardless, there will be some form of selection. And the principals, we can still encourage them to give a tap on the shoulder, like you said, to some students, to encourage them to run within their own schools. The idea behind that election is just the school should know who the person coming from their own school as a candidate is. And it's to ensure that we don't get like six people running from one school, for example, and none from other schools. In terms of the second point about the indigenous student trustee, I believe we talked about this briefly last year as well. I think that the, that begs the question, what is the population of indigenous students or students that identify as indigenous that we have within this board? And I'm not sure about the answer to that. Or if there's some guideline within the ministry as to if there's a certain portion, when it becomes necessary to have a student trustee to fit that position. But I think if we had the numbers and we see that there's a sizable portion, I think we'd be open to that idea. And I support the change to three point five about including something about the student senators communicating back to their student bodies.
Thank you, trustee Collard.
Thank you, through you to the student trustee. I just noticed under three point three K, it says failure to comply with all aspects of this policy may result in disqualification. And whenever the word may is in a policy, it always raises an alarm bell with me because then it becomes subjective and bias can enter into it. And I would rather that it would say will or not be there at all. Because I think if, if you say may, then you're, you're opening it up to the subjectivity of the people making the decision.
Thank you for that point, we actually discussed this and in the original version I wanted will as well. But we discussed that there could be extenuating circumstances where a student may have unknowingly violated a small portion of the policy and it would be a harsh move to disqualify them. And while it is subjective, I think we can use our reason, just saying that we would like as a board for as many students as possible to have the opportunity. There are some acts that, for example, advertising that you are a candidate before you're actually selected as a candidate that are unacceptable and we would not like to allow, but more minor violations that shouldn't necessarily result in disqualification. So that was the thinking behind the may.
Thank you. Thank you. And seeing no further questions, if there are any other comments or questions that come up, please email them to trustee Metropolansky or to trustee Danielli or Papin. And this will be returning on October the eighteenth after it's also gone to student senate. Thank you.
Can I just make a comment about?
No.
Well, I just want to, I want to applaud the work of trustee Metropolansky and, and Zaid as well because Zaid and Dash were the two that led this at the beginning. Mukta Sid has, trustee Mansour, I should say, has contributed. But the groundwork and the basis of this was on these two. So I know Zaid is off at university, but you know, I think it should be acknowledged the work he did on this as well, so thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. All right. So moving along, we are now up to the 2017-18 LTAP boundary review. Report 17099, Superintendent Newton and General Manager Renzella, on page 46 of our board package. Welcome Superintendent Newton and General Manager Renzella. When you're ready.
Thank you. Before you, this evening is a report outlining, moving forward with the boundary review for, as a result of the construction of the new Milton Southwest Number 10 Public School, which is scheduled to open for September 2018. This boundary review was identified in our long-term accommodation plan that was approved by the board in June, and I'd be glad to answer any other questions.
Thank you. And just so trustees realize, the actual recommendation ends in February 2018. Are there any comments or questions regarding the, the school boundary review? Trustee Daniele.
Can't believe I'm doing this, because it's, it's not something I usually believe in. But I am wondering if we could enter, we might want to entertain a motion to waive the rules and deal with this tonight. Because if we do it in October, that doesn't get, our last boundary review was very, very rushed to get it done in time. Gordon Jackie did an amazing job on it, given the time constraints. But I remember that the parents felt very, very rushed through it. So that, that would be my recommendation, if it was the will of the board, to waive the rules and deal with this tonight.
Director Miller.
That, for us, that would be, that would be perfectly okay. That'd be fine, if it's the will of the board.
Okay, so there's a motion to waive the rules made by trustee Daniele. Do I have a second, or trustee Harvey Hope?
Sorry, my conference will be...
Okay, so there's a comment on waiving the rules. Vice Chair Graves.
Yes, as someone who, who usually doesn't support waiving, waiving the rules, in this case, I, I do think, for two reasons. One, thank you for bringing this word, it's much needed for, for the community. Boyne really is at capacity. And, yeah, let's get on with it, is I think the, the sentiment. It's, there's no question that this has to happen. So, I would support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on waiving the rules for this tonight? Seeing none? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. So then I'll put the motion on the floor. Be resolved that the Halton District School Board direct the director to undertake a school boundary review for the new Milton Southwest Number 10 Public School, with an expected completion date of no later than February 2018. Moved by, trust, Vice Chair Graves, seconded by trustee Daniele. Any discussion on this, or did Superintendent Renzella, or Superintendent Newton want to speak to it? Go ahead.
We, through the chair, we definitely appreciate your support for this growing community and students. We anticipate this boundary view with an earlier start, will give the community some time to process and reflect, and it also will meet staffing timelines and pressures as well. We also recognize that hopefully there will not be 12 schools involved, as our last one was 12 schools. And I do appreciate the work of my partner, Gord Trufan, Superintendent Trufan, and the trustees, Jean Gray, for leading that, as well as Donna Daniele, Kim Graves, and Dom and his team. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope. I was, through you, Madam Chair, to the presenters, just wondered, which schools are we talking about? And I'll, just as one who co-chaired a previous one, think, think a little bit outside of the box, because this is Milton, on who possibly could actually, you don't want to forget one little pocket that we moved from one side, like, because we had that happen, and that we forgot we'd moved somebody years ago, and should have been moving them back. So just, just a heads up on that one. And also, where they might be if the school isn't ready. So whatever school that they're already in, those, those things as well. Again, because it's Milton, and I remember the year we had, every Second Street was a different school. So I'm sure you'll cover it all off, I'm just remembering that particular one of historical fixes that may need to be done, keep that in mind. Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, all those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. So we're now on the next item, closing the gap, information technology infrastructure and rollout, Superintendent Veerman, Superintendent Trufan, and Superintendent Cullen, you're staying back there. Page 49 of your board package. Welcome.
Thank you very much. You have the report in front of you. Just very, very briefly, you may recall from our budget process last spring, in June, we had this in the budget. And just after discussion at Admin Council, and with discussion with trustees, we did pull back some monies to, to pass our budget, and we did indicate that in September, we would be bringing this back to address technology acquisition for our schools, students and staff, and then to also address our Wi-Fi density issues that currently exist in our schools. And both Superintendent Veerman and I, or Cullen, would be happy to answer any questions that you may have about this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, would there be some urgency to having this passed tonight, so that you could get moving on having some of these things in place sooner than later?
I would appreciate that, because we do a rollout schedule for our schools, and we would like to, we would like to start that rollout schedule as soon as possible. If we don't, it would put us behind significantly.
Thank you. So I'm going to make a motion to waive the rules. Is there a second, or? No. That's someone, I'm putting my hand up. Could we get through the speakers list, and then decide if we're going to waive the rules? Well, I believe there is some urgency to this, but if that's the will, trustee Collard.
Thank you. I didn't intend to speak to waiving the rules, because I didn't anticipate that coming up tonight. But I am going to speak to it, because this is a significant amount of money, and without any public input on the expenditure. And I would not support waiving the rules on $2.5 million, without giving the public the, the right and the privilege of responding to the request. However, I also do recognize the need to upgrade the technology in our schools, and I just was curious if you could, would care to comment, this might go to Superintendent Cullen, on the status of the closing the gap initiative, and how much work is outstanding if we were to deplete by $2.5 million?
I think I actually can defer that probably to Superintendent Veerman, but to answer it in generic terms, the monies and the projects that we assign to close the gap are not impacted by this. This is in fact additional funds that we could have directed to close the gap, might be the right way to phrase the term, the concept.
Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I continue to have concerns about the rollout of Wi-Fi technology across our system. While I understand that we are complying with the current federal rules in that regard, I also understand that this, these rules are contested, and that globally, other jurisdictions are starting to do different things, such as limiting particularly our youngest students' exposure to wireless networks. So my question is, would the superintendent consider random testing of our older wireless access points to ensure that they're in fact functioning within the operating parameters in which they're supposed to operate within, so they're not, in some way, increasing exposure to our students?
Thank you through the chair to trustee L. Harrison. Absolutely. We have, we actually have our own tester. We would not have to go to a third party for that type of testing. We do do testing already. Talking to our manager of networks, he, we do do regular testing, and if you're asking for a commitment to continue to do that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope. I have two points to make. One, I'm not against waiving the rules, except that this particular report is, does not tell us what the $2.5 million is for, other than general terms of technology infrastructure. So it's hard to have an idea for the public, you know, is that 107 schools at this much, or is it this much at whatever, or how many things are we talking about buying, or how much, those kinds of things. So that's, that's part of it. The other piece I would draw people's attention to, what I was trying to say before, when we were in the capital update, Appendix D should be referred to in this report, because that's where the $15 million number comes from, the very top left corner. And answering trustee Collard's question, I, I believe about, is there money for this, or in the balance? If the balance available for future projects is $15 million per that thing, and if you take out the $9.9, which we don't have permission to use yet, we still have $5 million in that close the gap, which we could use for non-renewal projects. So the two and a half would come out of the 5.1. So yes, we have the money there for it, it is in accumulated surplus, it's in, it's in internally appropriated, close the gap accumulated surplus, it's, we could spend it. And I would just have thought that when you refer to the board-approved transfers to the close the gap, you know, just a quick, there's lots of missing pieces. So even just to refer to, in the same package, the close the gap appendix, which gives you all the information, would have maybe been helpful, because I was trying to figure out, you know, how we got from $15 million, when only seven or eight had been transferred over. So again, that, adding it up and subtracting, but all the information is in the Appendix B-D, sorry.
For, to answer your first question, trustee Harvey Hope, $2 million is for our Wi-Fi infrastructure, and roughly $500,000 is for our technology acquisition for our schools. That's...
So are we going to actually be able to use Wi-Fi in the gymnasiums? Is that part of this upgrade?
Yes.
Thank you. I do have a question. I believe that this information was brought to us through the budget process, and that we were, that, that the budget process is something that our public had input into. And I'm not sure that delaying it for two weeks, when it would be good for schools, I'm not sure how much public input would we be getting to change things when we've already had that input through our budget process. So I am going to make a motion to waive the rules. Do I have a second, or? Trustee Oliver. Is there any discussion on waiving the rules? Okay. All those in favor of waiving the rules? Yep. So I will now read the motion. Be resolved, the board of trustees approve a transfer from accumulated surplus, closing the gap in the amount of $2,541,121, to enhance the board's technology infrastructure and computer rollout. Moved by, trustee Gerbentz, seconded by trustee Pappen. Is there any discussion on the actual motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Thank you very much for your report. You got it? Okay. So we're now up to our information items for tonight. The first item is the high-performing students in elementary schools, report 17101, Superintendent, oh, sorry, up there, Salmini, on page 51 of your board package. Welcome Superintendent Salmini, when you're ready.
Thank you. The report that you have before you is a follow-up report to a review of performance programs that Associate Director Bowe brought to you last year. At that time, we were asked to survey elementary school principals, to find out exactly how many high-performing students we had in our elementary schools, to look into the provisions that were being made for those students in their home schools, to identify any challenges that schools were facing in terms of meeting the learning needs of these students, and to gauge the success of the students in the school. So this report is a summary of this data, and some next steps in terms of helping our schools to service high-performance students in their schools. I'll just offer a few highlights. We had 124 high-performing students in our elementary schools in the 2016-17 school year, which is a relatively small number in comparison to the total number of students that we have in our elementary schools. A variety of provisions that you have listed in the report are being provided for these students, both in their home schools, as well as in the program at WI-DIC. Principals identified common challenges in the survey data, and administrators reported a high level of success, both in terms of student achievement and well-being for these students. So in terms of follow-up, we want to get better at serving high-performing students in our schools, as well as all other students. So our school programs department will be working with schools and, and staffs to provide an administrator's guide to supporting students with high, high-performing students in schools, so that we can share amongst all of our, our, our schools. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And thank you for your report. There are a few questions for you. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. I very much appreciate this report, and I'm not sure if my question is, is relevant at this point, but, because when I was going through it and looking at the number of students that we have in the program, it made me a little more curious. I remember when we created this program, and so I went looking for information on it, and on the WI-DIC. I'm curious, because it was originally intended as a high-performance program, both for athletes and those in the arts. And now it is stated as a high-performance for athletes. And I'm wondering when we made that change? And I also remember when it was created, there was a set of criteria specifically for that self-contained flexible timetable program, and I can't find that criteria anywhere anymore. It outlined the levels of nationals, that you needed to be playing at, things like that. And I think it might be confusing for parents, that we don't seem to have that anymore.
Through the chair to trustee Daniele. I did, I know that on the website, there is a section for WI-DIC that does outline some criteria. So for example, that they need to be training more than 10 hours during the instructional day. I'm, I'm not sure, they need to be performing at the national, provincial, or international level? Is that the criteria?
I'm an idiot, because I did just find it. I was looking in the forums, and I didn't realize, my computer had not fully loaded, so I couldn't, didn't realize I could scroll down. And it does say that they must be performing or competing at provisional, national, or international levels. Thank you. But again, I am wondering, when we decided to simply market this program to athletes? Because it was int- Because it was intended for high-performing artists as well, that musicians, things that are also performing. So that's a curiosity for me.
So I'll answer the part, in terms of my report, I asked about all high performers, including the arts. So that's the data that's before you. I would maybe defer to Associate Director Bog. I'm not sure if he has the history of when that change happened.
Superintendent Newton has a response for us.
Thank you, through the Chair. WI Dick's parent community and the sports programs around the community, and the arts programs, met with the principal team at WI Dick two years ago. They found that the students that are involved in music and art would rather not leave their schools. And hence, the focus then was on athletes. I know the principal team and teachers of that program have gone out to their communities and to those, and to invite parents in for an open house. They've gone over the application and those pieces. We are finding that it is declining. So there is an interest, an interest in grade seven and eight, but grade six, at this point, we only have five students that are interested in the program. And in surveying a number of them, it's because students want to stay in their home school. And they also feel that they are supported in their home school. So clearly, this, we don't know the longevity of this program, because people seem to be getting the supports that they do require in the local schools that they are at.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Thank you, through you, to Superintendent Salmini. I have a kind of a difficult question, I think. First, I want to thank you very much for developing an administrator's guide. I think that's a great start. But I'm puzzling over this a little bit, because if we have 45 students being served at WI Dick, and we have another 68 students in Oakville/Burlington, who may also wish to attend a similar program, I'm wondering, are we saying that we're going to suspend what's at WI Dick in favor of the administrator's guide to supporting high-performing students? Are we going to continue at WI Dick? Are we going to continue at WI Dick and provide one for Burlington/Oakville? I'm not clear on what the direction is.
Through the Chair to Trustee Collard. For now, the program at WI Dick will continue. But as Superintendent Newton just pointed out, the numbers are declining in terms of people that are choosing that option. So last year, there were 45 students. This year, there are 31 students in that program. So that is a decline. And I think that does speak to the fact that our schools are getting better and better at meeting the needs of the students within their home school. We always opt for inclusive education in trying to meet the needs of our students in their home schools. And so the notion around the guide and providing opportunities for staff to learn how to get better at this, for this population, but also for other populations, is the direction that we're taking. So we know that there are students who miss more than 10 hours of school a week, because they're high performers. But we also know that we have other students, for a variety of reasons, that miss school. And we are hoping that we continue to build the capacity of our school staff to be able to differentiate for those needs.
May I follow up?
Go ahead.
So then, I'm wondering if we could perhaps, I just lost my question, just a second. It's completely, I completely lost my question. I'm sorry.
Director Miller.
Through the Chair, Amos, to Trustee Collard. The purpose of this report was not to make a recommendation around WI Dick, or expanding the program, or otherwise. It was, if you recall, Associate Director Bog brought a report, and this resulted out of that report for further information. And it was, it was never our intent to bring a recommendation this evening around continuing or ceasing the operation, the operation, the program at WI Dick, and so on. I think if, if that's, if those are considerations going forward, I think we have to, there's a little bit more work that needs to be done, because there has been very little consultation with the community around that, I think. Am I correct? Yeah.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Can you go to the bottom? Thank you. Trustee Grabent.
Thank you, through you, Chair Amos. Thank you very much for this report. Now, this whole topic came up because of a community request. It came from many parents in the southern part of our board, who are struggling to be able to, they are unable to access the program at WI Dick, because geographically, it's too far. And they're, I talked to their parents, and their children feel that they're not really being accommodated appropriately in the school. And it's affecting their mental health. And it's, I can understand it. If you're the only student in your school that's a high performer, and you're out all the time, group projects, you know, that, that sort of community within your school gets lost. Whereas at WI Dick, you're all in the same boat. You're all, you know, high performers. You have a camaraderie about you. And you would be able to, you know, relate to what's going on around you. I, I really would like to know if we've actually consulted with the community. We've, I know we've heard from the community that they would like something like this. But have we actually consulted the students and the families that are, you know, outside of the WI Dick program? You know, seeing what their actual experience is in the school, being a high performer?
Thank you for the question. Through the Chair to Trustee Grabent. For this report, we haven't spoken to students or families. However, as part of the planning for creating the administrative guide, we plan to access information from them, so that we can add their voice to the recommendations that we make to schools in terms of supporting students.
Go ahead. Just one point, that after this report came out, a number of parents contacted me, saying they're having a hard time even finding information about the WI Dick program on our website right now. So I don't know. Okay, so it's, it's not, the information's not even on our website. So I'm not surprised that people are not, you know, signing up for a program that's not even on our board website. Just a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Al Harrison.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I was wondering whether you could indicate the timing of the guide? And then, secondly, you, I think Trustee Grabent's, her question led you to say you were going to consult with the families who are seeking that particular program? And I was wondering whether the families who are, and students who are in that program, would also be able to lend their insights to the guide?
Through the Chair to Trustee Al Harrison. So our plan was to, through the administrators that responded to this survey, who know who the students are in their buildings, to have them collect data from the families via survey in all of the schools, including WI Dick. Because even in this data, we included that school we collected from all of our elementary schools.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent Salmini. I guess I was confused when I read this about high-performing students, the first line of the background. It's not clear that high-performing students from this report have to also miss 10 hours of school day. So it may be on the criteria somewhere, but I'm just, this was sort of a, if it was the first time you were reading this and trying to figure it out, you wouldn't really understand that. I'm wondering whether or not, I like the idea of the guide. I think that's going to be good as far, and also useful for others, expanded purposes, actually. Because I don't think the problem of high-performing students, if we're talking about just the ones that are at that level, they may not actually have told the school, except if they're missing the 10 hours. There are some people, and I remember years ago, they've rearranged their entire schedules in such a way that the school didn't know. They were like 3:05 to, you know, 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night. And so what was happening was, it was their homework being affected, not their school being affected. Because they didn't realize they could ask the school to release them during the day. Other students at the secondary level often take a double lunch. I remember one student I knew that was at that level, that just, you know, practiced for two hours at lunch, or had training, or whatever. So I think if we, you know, if you're saying it's just the students that are missing 10 hours a week for this provincial, national, international level, then that's a smaller subset. But the guide may help all of them. So I think if we get, when we see the guide, or when it comes back again, we have to be very synced on who you're, which audience you're targeting. Because I think the principals might not know the whole group.
Through the Chair to Trustee Harvey Hope. That's a very good point. Part of the survey that we did put out to the principals included a question, asking them about proximate numbers of students that they accommodate for, that don't meet the definition of a high-performing student that's outlined in the report. So there are some students that miss maybe three hours, or maybe four hours, but they're, and they may not be competing at a national, or a provincial, or an international level. But they're still missing school hours in order to be part of their sport or their activity. And so our hope is that the strategies that we outline in this guide would be helpful to school staffs in accommodating those students as well. And in reference to your first question, I'm not sure if I understood it correctly, but we've, up in the definition in the report, said that they have secure training, competition, rehearsal schedule that takes them away from school during traditional school hours for a minimum of 10 hours, in terms of being identified as a high-performing student, as per the current program that's at WI Dick. Does that answer your question?
I was just going to suggest that the definition was very clear, and not just sort of in a paragraph called "background". And there's not secured, uh, there's a missing word. So if you read the sentence the way you just said it, it would make a little bit more sense.
Thank you. And may I please go back? Because Trustee Al Harrison asked a second part to her question. I wanted to respond in terms of timeframe. Our hope is to have the guide completed by December.
Thank you. And seeing no further questions at this time, thank you very much for your report. So the next item is notices of motion. Do we have any notices of motion tonight? Seeing none, we're now at the Director's Report. Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos. I only have two items tonight. First one is, I'm going to refer to Executive Officer of Human Resources, McFadden, to talk about a very brief on reorgs that are occurring in elementary schools at the moment.
Thank you, through the Chair. As I normally do, I'll be bringing a more comprehensive report at the next board meeting around our staffing process to staff the schools for September. But we always get some questions about reorganizations and why they happen. And so again, those are necessitated when the opening day enrollments have not come as we expected them to. Either there are more students enrolled than we expected, or fewer. And therefore, to meet the primary class-size regulations that the ministry has set down, we have to, principals have to reorganize their schools. So this September, for reorganization, which will be completed tomorrow, new teachers should be in place by Monday, if they are not already. If principals were able to staff reorgs earlier, they may be already completed. But at the latest, by Monday, the 25th, we added a total of 17 classes, board-wide, and that affected 16 schools. One of our schools, Odenawi Public School, we added two classes. We had to remove a total of classes in 10 schools, where enrollment did not meet projections. So again, those were to ensure that the board meets the primary class-size regulations under the Education Act. And we'll be locking those numbers in to the ministry website, which is quite a complex process that we have to do annually, this Friday, the 22nd. So that concludes the report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Executive Officer McFadden. Is there any comments or questions for her on this? Seeing none? You had something else?
Thanks, Chair Amos. I have one more report, I guess, and it's, it's bittersweet. It's bitter for us, but sweet for the individual, I would imagine. But I think there's probably a part of that's a bitter, maybe bitter's not the right word, but you know, mixed emotions. We have been very fortunate in this board to have a superintendent of facilities, who has been around for about 112 years. Built, started off building one-room schoolhouses, and now builds massive high schools. In all seriousness, though, we have been very fortunate to have a superintendent of facilities who has managed that, what other superintendents of facilities in this province manage around renovations and those kinds of things in schools, which is challenging enough. Add to that the growth that this board has experienced, particularly in Milton, North Burlington, and North Oakville. It's been an almost undoable job. It's been an undoable job that he was able to do. And it is with regret, from a board's perspective, and from the community's perspective, that Jerry Cullen is announcing his retirement effective August 31st, 27. What did I say? December, December 31st, 2017. From my perspective, Jerry will be very, very sorry, and but very happy for you. You've been 30 years in this board. You've won awards. You've represented this board. You've represented your profession professionally, on every single occasion. You should be very, very proud of the work that you've done for this board, for yourself, your family, and for, mostly important, the students of this board. You've been a tremendous asset. We're grateful that you've done all this work, and, and the difference you've made. You've made a significant difference in the lives of kids in this board. And Halton, earlier this evening, we had EQAO results. And Halton continues to outperform the province in every category. And that's in no small part to the facilities that those kids work in. So on behalf of the senior men, and I'll let the trustees speak for themselves, I want to thank you, Jerry, and we look forward to working with you for the next few months. And it'll be difficult to replace you, but you deserve a rest. We wish you all the best in your retirement, Jerry. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, I think. I know that we'll have the opportunity to roast, or toast Jerry before he leaves. But I just wanted to say what a pleasure it has been working with him. I cry at commercials, too. Jerry has been one of the people who have been here, probably the longest that I can remember. Gail has been here a long time as well, but he's going to take a big piece of history with him as well. And what he has accomplished with this board is truly a testament to why we're one of the best boards in not just the province, but in Canada. And thank you, Jerry, for doing that. Are there any other comments or questions for the Director on his report tonight? Seeing none? Okay, so then we're moving on to the communications from the Chair. So earlier this week, I believe I circulated a letter that we received in response to asking the Ministry for Funding for our Oakville Northeast School. And this was the reply that we got back. "Thank you for your correspondence about the Halton District School Board and the Ministry of Education's Capital Priorities Funding Program Timelines and Funding Consideration for a New School in Oakville." for a new school in Oakville, Oakville Northeast Number Two Public School Project. I appreciate the opportunity to respond. As you know, on an annual basis, the Ministry invites school boards to submit requests for funding consideration through its Capital Priorities Program to address their highest priority capital needs. This is the primary program for funding projects to address accommodation pressures, replace facilities in port repair, support the consolidation of underutilized facilities, and provide facilities for French language rights holders in underserved areas. The Ministry will be reviewing all capital priorities submissions received by the September 8, 2017 deadline and expects to make announcements in early 2018. Please note that all funding announcements regarding projects submitted by school boards will be made at that time. Should the Halton District School Board submit any proposals, including the Oakville Northeast Number Two Public School project through the 2017 Capital Priorities Program, these projects would be subject to ministry approval. Although it is the responsibility of the school board to manage capital asset, it is the responsibility of the ministry to ensure that funding approval is provided only for those capital projects that meet the ministry's criteria, including whether the board is proposing a cost-effective solution. I would like to remind you that as part of your board's planning process, there are a number of options your board may employ, including attendance, boundary changes, grade and reconfigurations, addressing targeted programming options, or exploring busing students to schools with available space, among others. Please be aware that the limited capital funding and an unknown quantity of project proposals from all school boards, there is no certainty that your board's Oakville Northeast Number Two Public School will receive capital funding approval as part of the 2017 capital projects process. However, your board may continue to develop its initial plan for this project in anticipation of its approval. This may include site assessment, initial drawings, permit applications, or other preliminary project planning actions. While this would allow your board to expedite the project development process, there is risk associated with this course of action. In the event the project approval is not granted, your board will be responsible for managing the costs associated with project from within the board's existing operating funding grants. Thank you again for taking the time to write. I trust this information is helpful." So basically, the government is not willing to change their timelines so that will allow us to have a school for 2018 in the northeast Oakville area, which is very disappointing because that is, traditionally, we are receiving the news, I believe in October, of what our funding is, and for some reason, they have changed it this year to the spring. And I want to know, based on the information that we have received, can we go ahead and buy the property that we need to have for this school and go ahead with the zoning and all those other pieces of, so that when the, if, when and if the funding comes forward, we can actually start building the school? So we may be able to occupy it in part of 2018?
Through you, Chair Amos, to, or through you, Chair Amos, to Chair Amos. I'm going to refer to Superintendent Spearman and Cullen over this. Thanks.
I'll take the first part to the chair. Purchase a property, yes, we can, because that's the EDC portion. It's not part of the process that was referred to in the letter. The procedures that are currently in place for the approval of capital process, projects, has multiple steps and stages to it, as you know. So right from the beginning, the appointment of architect, the initial cost estimates, before we go to tender, before the award of tender. So there are multiple milestones in there. I think, as was referred to in the letter, we can take some element of risk and proceed with some of the pre-planning stages to be as ready as we can. I think there's a comfort level in this room that we know that project is a high priority and will ultimately be approved at some point in time, so the risk is minimal. Being prepared, though, is somewhat complicated by the new dates. So that, that January-ish or early 2018 announcement would all but eliminate an early school year opening. It may facilitate a mid-year opening, but that would all have to be reviewed once we know the dates and the approvals. But we'll be as prepared as we can, be the start as soon as we can.
Then I'd like to request that we move forward with whatever we can do for that school site so that we can be ready in anticipation of an announcement of funding. And my concern is, have you seen how many houses are even being built east of Trafalgar Now? I mean, we don't, yeah, I know, it probably will require a motion. I don't know where all these kids are going to go, and I know that River Oaks right now is the holding school for that community, but I don't know where the French immersion kids will go because Odenawi is actually zoned to hold those kids, and they can't, they won't have the room. It's already sitting in the library and stuff until all the portables get in place. They won't have a gym.
Point of order, I really think this conversation needs to be in private session.
I'm not sure that it does. I believe that it needs to be, the community needs to be aware that there's a potential problem with making a school. I'm not talking dollars, and maybe the motion has to come. Could I have some, is there any plans for the potential with the growth that's happening in North Oakville for those students?
Through you, Chair Amos, to all trustees. We, I'll refer to Superintendent Riddick in a second to elaborate on those plans, but those are, I want to make it clear, those are contingency plans, if necessary, in terms of the enrollment in the school. So Superintendent Riddick can elaborate on what those plans may be. We're not, these are not carved in stone yet, but these are the ones that we've been looking at.
Before, excuse me, before she starts, could we have a motion to proceed past 10?
Could I have a motion to extend past 10 o'clock? Trustee Grabant, seconded by trustee Reynolds. Just a minute, we have to pass this. Do you have a? Okay, there it is. All those in favor? And that passes, thank you. Do you have that? Gail? Do you have the results? Superintendent Riddick, please, your first time speaking.
Okay, there we go. Sorry. So through the chair, to, to the chair. We're currently working on some options as to what to do when Odenawi is full. We currently have some wiggle room in the organization as a number of students that they were expecting haven't shown up yet. But we are looking at a possible redirect to Post Corners for the English program and Sunningdale for the French immersion program.
Okay, thank you. The Sunningdale community would be thrilled seeing as they just came down in numbers. Okay, well, thank you for that information. Okay, so I just want it noted that I'm very concerned, and I'm not sure how we can put pressure on the ministry to move this up because obviously it's not happening, but trustee Harvey Hope.
May I make a request that that letter is attached to the minutes, seeing as how you read it out? And for those that need it in an alternate form than verbal, it would be useful to have it.
I did send it to all trustees.
I mean for the public.
Oh, in the minutes.
In the minutes, in the package, please.
I can do that. Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison. I don't think I have anything else for public. I'm just looking to see. Nope, I don't. So we're now up to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. The Audit Committee had their first meeting of the year yesterday. Agenda items included a review of the 2016-17 Internal Audit Report, as well as a review of the three-year HDSB Internal Audit Plan. In addition to this, the Audit Committee received a report on the activities of the regional internal auditor since April of last spring. The Audit Committee anticipates submitting an annual report to the board, the first Board of Trustees meeting in November. And a note to all trustees, the next meeting of the Audit Committee is scheduled for November 7, 2017, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. And as always, all trustees are welcome to attend this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. The work of the Special Education Review Committee is scheduled to resume with the first meeting of the school year booked for this Friday morning, and the Mental Health Steering Committee is looking to book a date for its first meeting of the year as well.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. The environmental management team met yesterday for the first time during the school year, and there are two documents that will be presented for consideration to Admin Council on Monday. One of them is related to agreeing meeting guideline, and the second one is related to the purchase of commercially bottled water. It was presented and discussed yesterday that there are a number of boards around the province that have stopped purchasing bottled water and what their experiences have been in that regard. And it was felt that, you know, with the installation of bottle refilling stations at many or most, or almost all of our schools, that, you know, maybe our time has come as well to give consideration to this, as it is, it sort of, sort of, it's harmful to the environment and could be a really good news stewardship story. So, thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. This is just a follow-up really to the Inspire Award and your report that was provided in your consent agenda. Just a reminder to all trustees that, that we want to encourage you at the start of the year to market the Inspire Awards. Thank you.
Thank you. And if everybody has signed their folder and not returned it to me, could you do that, please? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Just a heads up, we had the first Joint Health and Safety Committee meeting of the year this past week. I attended as your representative. We have a lot of new members and a lot of good discussion at that meeting, and when the minutes become available, I will circulate them to the trustees.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
I think I have two reports, one from CAC. The first meeting was last Tuesday, and we had Superintendent Blackwell join us and give an overview of the Burlington transitions. And we also discussed special needs strategy and received an update regarding specat review. Regarding committee of the whole, we had, again, our first meeting last Wednesday, and we talked about, talked about our planning for the year, and a lot of great work is arising out of that. It's been prioritized, thanks to trustee Grabant and her, and her spreadsheet. And you can look for an email from me over the next day or so in terms of a question as to, would you wish the first one to be? I'll put forward some proposals for, for the group, for next week's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Thank you. The Ontario Public School Board Association has its first Board of Directors meeting this weekend. I have circulated the agenda to all trustees, and please let me know if you have any comments or questions as well. Trustee Daniele and I are on the Public Education Symposium Planning Committee, and I know that some of you have given us some feedback on agenda items for that symposium. Please continue to bring those forward. Our first meeting teleconference is next week. On top of that, we have the Subcommittee for the Bylaw Subcommittee next Wednesday at 11:00 a.m. Several of you have indicated an interest in attending. I just want to make sure that even if you haven't indicated an interest, that you are aware of the date and time. So Wednesday at 11:00 in the Director's Boardroom.
Through Chair Amos, trustee Collard, when is PES, the date? I know it's January. Okay, I believe that's the same weekend as, as a Holocaust Education Conference.
The Holocaust Education Conference that's being offered by the Friends of Simon Wiesenthal Center begins the Saturday night of that same weekend. PES runs Thursday, Friday, and then Saturday, it ends at noon, and then the Holocaust Education is a dinner that evening, and then all day Sunday.
I've been asked to be on the panel for the Holocaust one, so, okay.
Seeing no further committee reports. We're now up to trustee questions and comments, and it was requested that trustees prepare something short to report back regarding the conferences that they had attended, specifically Pardon? And the AGM. So, so as we could get that off the order paper as a report back after supporting the funding of the students, or the trustees. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. This actually is a question that relates to report 17107 presented by Superintendent Trufan, so I'd like it documented in the minutes as such. I apologize, it took me a bit to kind of formulate my, my thinking, but in light of some of the comments that went around the table and the newly released technology and new resources that went out to our parent community, I would, and a comment that was made by Superintendent Trufan, I'd like for the superintendent to please elaborate on the testing that's done in terms of testing the safety of the Wi-Fi and the standards, whether the standards are being met in our schools.
Sure, thank you. Through the chair to trustee Oliver and the rest of the trustees. We did a, a few years ago, we did a comprehensive study, actually a third-party company came in and tested a number of our schools, and the results came back very safe. The frequencies were, and I had to ask trustee, or Superintendent Blackwell, four one, four one thousandths of a percent below the acceptable threshold. And we do have a device that we can use and that we do use in our schools, and to quantify my statement, I think is fair. And I think with the staffing that exists in our network department, I could commit to doing random checks of up to 10 schools per year. And I would also like to say the, the radios that we buy from our vendor are also committed to the safety of, of who they sell their devices to, and we can, we also are able to monitor them right from the Singleton Center as well. So we are absolutely committed to the safety of the devices that we're putting into our schools. You're welcome.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Through the chair. This question is regarding the PAR implementation. I had attended a school council meeting this week, and there was a question regarding the clarity on the membership of the individual committees, whether there's any particular parameters in which the school council chair or their designate, if they choose a designate, if there is any parameters on who can sit, be if there is any parameters on who can sit...be...sit on either the Aldershot Exploration Committee or any of the implementation committees, specifically if the school's council chair chooses to assign it to somebody else.
I will refer to Superintendent Blackwell. The Implementa...the Implementation Committee, it's laid out in the policy, the board's policy. The Aldershot one is a little bit different because we don't have a policy on that, so I'll let Superintendent Blackwell know.
Yeah, and one of the things within our...sorry, through the chair to trustee Reynolds. One of the things in the policy is the caveat that the committee can determine additional members, and I'm speaking specifically for the integration committees for Pearson and MM, which is currently underway. One of the...my understanding, and Superintendent Trufan can jump in if he needs to. At the meeting last night, there was a request to have two council chairs from Aldershot on the Exploration Committee, and that was welcome. Additionally, the trustee will be on that committee, the school principal, we've got Superintendent of Partnerships, responsible for partnerships, innovation. We've created a tentative committee. Again, that will be...we'll have an opportunity to determine if there's...there are more committee members required.
Thank you, trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much. Going back to Chair Amos's comments at the beginning of trustee questions and comments regarding reporting back from PES and the AGM, I offer my apologies. As some of you may know, I inadvertently erased some of the notes on my iPad earlier this year, so I no longer have my PES notes. I'm hoping somebody else who was there does. But I do have from the AGM my notes on Joseph Warden on creativity, surviving and thriving in an era of disruption, as well as assessment in the service of learning, and I am happy to share those with my fellow trustees. And would that be considered appropriate in terms of reporting back if I were to share my notes?
That'd be great, thank you.
That would be appropriate, thank you. I would be fulfilling that obligation. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee L Harrison.
If I commit to...thank you, through you Madam Chair. If I commit to reading trustee Daniele's notes, will I be fulfilling my requirements in that regard?
Well, do you not have anything to report on those conferences that you attended, anything and the...what you saw, or...
Madam Chair, for me, the OPSA-PES conference, the most valuable part for me was networking with members from other boards and learning about their experiences and challenges, where we have commonalities, and what processes and procedures they have been able to put in place.
I would totally agree with you during the part around the governance policies that they were looking at, right? Thank you.
Vice Chair Graves. Thank you, I attended both PES and the AGM. PES, we gave feedback on the multi-year strategic planning guide, which was a great exercise to go through because there's a lot of great feedback there that even though it's not in its final form, I think we can think about and use in future years. And the biggest takeaway for me was the woman who spoke from Kingston General Hospital, and how they turned around a significant issue with stakeholder feedback and the importance of storytelling through that. The AGM, I believe I've reported on that before, but it may have been Committee of the Whole. The two most important individual sessions that I used there, I'm just going to remind you of what they were. Well, one of the keynotes was about triangulation, and I know we've spoke a little bit about that already, and it'll come up again, I think, a little bit later tonight. The Ombudsman Workshop, just to remind trustees that we can ask for more information. I know we saw the report today. If we want details, there is a mechanism where we can ask for our own personal details. And then there's a very important workshop on your rights on social media, and I'm going to read this piece very briefly. It was from Michael Heinz, the lawyer, the OPSA lawyer. Explore the rights and options of a board in coping with and responding to parents and employees who decide to take on and bully the board through public criticism and social...on social media. So there are some very important takeaways there, and I know I do have the handout. I'm not sure if I scanned and sent around, but I think that they've provided the...spread... what would you call it? Slides from the presentation, and I wonder if I could ask people who are familiar with the OPSA website to help us in finding those slides, because I think it'd be very helpful to certainly sum around this table. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Thank you. Yes, I had reported on PES and Labor Relations both at the board during trustee comments and questions several times, and I would be happy to share my notes from the AGM.
Thank you. Trustee Gervant.
So I too attended the PES, and I was only there for the Friday, and I would say the best takeaway for me was the Chris Voleum social media fitness chat. It was excellent. I definitely understand why schools bring him in for their pick...for their pro grants. But what I would suggest in the future, since when we have these kinds of symposiums there, a bunch of us go to, perhaps we could co-write a little one-page thing instead of taking time and time and time to do this at the end of the night when we're all falling asleep.
I'm not disagreeing, but something that's been long outstanding, so...and I must agree, I only was there the Friday as well, and the social media with...that Chris Voleum was part of, also the viewpoints of the different school boards and how they use social media to reach out to their communities was a very...I found was very valuable. Trustee Harvey Hope.
I too went to both PES and AGM. I write notes at the time, which are at the moment buried, so I can't...I will be able to share them with you, but not at the moment. I seem to recall doing trustee comments after each of them because we would talk about it, although I happened to run across, I did voice memos of all of the singing at PES and our...in the...of the groups that came in and talked. So I can actually share those, but I always find it really interesting to see what other trustees are doing, what they bring up, the questions they have, the problems that they're having. And particularly at the PES, we end up being able to talk to other trustees, and as trustee L Harrison said, the networking that goes on is as important. I remember in other cases, we've had rural versus urban discussions. We've had conversations about is transportation, how bad was it for you? I remember talking to Thames Valley about how do you deal with your French immersion? So it's hard to capture exactly what it is, but I agree that I think we should probably try harder to use the form at the time because we all know it's valuable, but it's hard to express it, and when almost all of us are at PES, it doesn't occur to us what we all have to then come back and share with each other when we're all there, so we'll have to figure out how that works.
Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. I too have attended both sessions and very much enjoyed them both, and I'd have to concur with the comments over on that side of the room, that the interface that you have with trustees, and I now can say that I'm getting to know trustees from around the province, and I look forward to meeting them every year and finding out what the issues are in their own areas. But I would say this, that in some of the more challenging sessions that I attended were around the topic of audit, and I think that trustee Harvey Hope would agree with me that whereas there was some to be learned, we would have recommendations for future sessions on that area. But indeed, it was worthwhile going and certainly being joined by trustee Harvey Hope in terms of my personal learning.
Thank you. Trustee Pappen.
Thank you, through the chair. I just wanted to add that I did not attend PES, and I did not attend the AGM, so I do not have anything to report.
Thank you. Are there any other trustee questions and comments? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Pappen. But you did go to NSBA, and you did report when you came back from NSBA, so just...it's not that she hasn't done networking with others, she has just chosen a different venue.
And I will follow up. I also attended the Canadian School Board Association Conference in Vancouver, and I'll just tell you briefly that it was wonderful. It was wonderful to be back in B.C. I was lucky to meet...or fortunate to meet a friend of Superintendent Blackwell's who gave a session on Indigenous education in B.C. I was also impacted by the Indigenous education and how upfront it is in that province. I met an Indigenous trustee from One Hundred Mile House, who was very quiet, and he didn't seem to have a lot of connections there, even though he was from B.C. and a lot of the trustees were from B.C. So I made an effort to sort of pick him out, and I sat with him at his table one morning, and I thought it was kind of interesting because there was just the two of us at the table for a while, and everybody seemed to be going to other tables. So...but by the end, the last-minute people all came to our table. But he told me about his life, and he had struggled for many years on the streets, and at one point just decided he had to give up alcohol, and, you know, it was very interesting, and he talked about some of his issues that he has as an Indigenous trustee, which I've found very heartfelt, and anyway, he talked about going to the conference next year in Nova Scotia, so maybe I'll see him again there. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee L Harrison.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair, I was wondering if I could ask Superintendent Padra Berwick to share an exciting announcement that was made in Oakwood Public School by the Minister...Minister Nadeau Harris recently.
Yes, I'd be happy to, through the chair, to trustees. We announced that Oakwood Public School will be getting their first co-located Ontario Early Years Center and Family Center. It'll be two rooms, and they're doing the retrofitting now, and it'll be opening in February of 2018, and we'll really offer a whole slate of services really targeted to the zero-to-four age population, so it's that continuum of KRO, zero-to-12 in the school. And so it's a big move forward for us. The second one will be in the New Milton Ten School as well, so we'll have two of them soon. So it was a good announcement, the minister was there, Director Miller was there, and many others from the region, and the mayor of Oakville was there joining the announcement as well, so it was a big event. And trustee L Harrison was there.
Thank you, that is exciting.
May I follow up? Just to say that this center has a very long acronym, O-Y...
O-E-Y-C-S.
Yes, and I'll have you know that the fellow that names such was there and agreed to give it a more user-friendly handle, so I thought that was very interesting. And he said he would do that soon.
Well, that's good news, he had an impact on them. Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, we need a motion to rise into private. Moved by trustee Gervant, seconded by trustee Gray. All those in favor? Trustee L Harrison. And that passes unanimously, thank you. We will reconvene in five minutes.